All right, let's do this. Okay, I'm gonna call the August 8th Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Celine, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Secretary Harris, Commissioner Bardo, and Commissioner Lowry, who are excused this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time, this is time for public comment. There, we take public comment items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Staff, request for continuances?
Yes, good evening Chair. Staff would request that the minutes be continued to the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and skip that item and move on. Moving on to the public hearing items. Item number two, the Chihuahua Cerveza Patio Expansion, PA 2024-0141. Site location is 3107 Newport Boulevard. Hello? Staff, do we do have a presentation on this?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, we haven't opened up the public comment.
Yes, Chair. We have Consultant Planner Kelly Bufo here to provide a presentation.
Great, thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, good evening Chair and Planning Commissioners. As you mentioned, the item before you this evening is a request from Chihuahua Cerveza to do a permanent patio expansion to their location at the Landing Shopping Center. The business is located on the east side of the development, next to Chipotle and other similar retail properties. In general, the Landing Shopping Center is bounded by Newport Boulevard, 30th Street, West Balboa Boulevard, and 32nd Street. Surrounding uses include single and two-family residential dwellings, with the nearest residential abutting a shopping center to the southwest. There are a variety of commercial uses along the Newport Boulevard corridor, including Lido House Hotel and Malarkey's. The photo here kind of shows you the existing temporary patio at Chihuahua Cerveza, which was approved through a series of emergency temporary use permits and a limited term permit. The current expanded patio is 867 square feet. They are proposing to permanently extend that existing, to remove the existing temporary patio and permanently expand that outdoor patio to a total of 1,403 square feet. That'll include, be a permanent construction, as well as constructing a new walkway around the perimeter of the patio so that that doesn't have to bisect the outdoor patio once it's constructed. The project also includes decreasing the interior net public area from 1,446 square feet to 1,213 square feet to match the as-built conditions of the business. As the new temporary, or new permanent patio will displace 10 parking spaces in the parking lot. To offset that partially, they are proposing to construct two new parking spaces behind the pavilions' pro, shopping business. They are also requesting a parking waiver for 52 parking spaces for the totality of the Landing Parking Lot. The business currently has an ABC Type 47 license and permissions for live entertainment, which is indoor only and has limitations on the number of musicians, does not allow amplified music or dancing. And they are proposing for that to stay the same, so no changes as part of this project. Oh, boy. There we go. So this is showing the existing approved and proposed floor plans. So that kind of shows you that the interior area is going to remain the same, shows you the footprint of the outdoor patio, and shows how that walkway is going to be redirected around the patio. So you're not going to be walking through the parking lot, that will be a raised sidewalk that is consistent with the rest of the walkways in the center. So the expand, the existing square footage of the business requires 43 parking spaces. The expanded business requires 58 parking spaces. The total requirement for parking spaces in the entire center in the proposed condition is seven, 276 spaces, with the 52 space waiver that will decrease to a total required parking of 224 spaces, which is consistent with what is available in the center currently. So that 52 number is not just including the number of spaces that need to be waived for the expanded business. This also includes the spaces that will be removed as part of the construction, so the eight spaces there. It is also, takes into account the two spaces being added. There are an additional four parking spaces that are currently not available because of car corrals for pavilions. And that number also includes the totality of previous parking waivers that have been granted at the center. In order to support the parking waiver, the applicant did prepare a parking study where they did onsite parking observations over three days, so Thursday, Friday, and a Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at one-hour intervals. Peak parking was observed on the Saturday at 1:00 p.m., where approximately 137 spaces out of the 224 available were occupied, leaving the 39% surplus of parking spaces in the lot. The property has a parking management plan that can be deployed if there are issues with parking at the center. Options related to that parking plan include creating a rideshare area if needed for rideshare pickup and drop-off. They can potentially deploy valet if needed. And they also have pretty, also have robust, no-peach parking, parking patrol in the parking lot to make sure that spaces aren't taken care, taken up by folks who are not utilizing the center. The parking study and the parking management plan have been reviewed and accepted by the Public Works Traffic Engineering Department. So findings related to the project is, staff finds that the, recommends that the project is appropriate land use for the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The zoning district does allow for retail and restaurant uses that are community-serving, and it does not have any late hours past 11:00 a.m. or 11:00 p.m. They are not proposing any changes to their existing operational characteristics outside of the expansion of the patio. So hours of operation for both the patio and the interior of the business, sale of alcohol, and their hours of operation for live entertainment will not change as part of this project. The design of the expanded outdoor patio area is compatible with the aesthetics of the Landing. It uses the same materials and design as the existing storefronts, so it will blend in. The Police Department has reviewed and provided conditions of approval incorporated into the resolution. That does include all of the conditions of approval from the previous use permit for the business, which are carrying over into the new resolution. And the project would not affect public access or use to the beach. This is just a selection of those conditions related to hours of operation and limitations on live entertainment that are included in the conditions, which will ensure that the operation does not create any nuisance for surrounding commercial or residential uses. Staff is recommending that Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to a Class 1 and Class 3 exemption because it has no potential impact to have, or no potential to have a significant impact on the environment, and to adopt Resolution Number PC 2024-15 for the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit. Staff did receive, is here for any questions. We did receive one public comment from Mr. Jim Mosher on the item. And the applicant representative team is here, including their planning consultant and their traffic engineer, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? I'll start down with Commissioner Vice Chair Rosin.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Along the current path of travel, and when you look at that current path of travel with the patio expansion, generally what I'm trying to get at is that location of the sidewalk. Are there going to be gates on either side? And would gates be required because of alcohol service?
So the patio will have to be secured in order for alcohol to be served out on the patio, so that will include some kind of gate or security to make sure that the alcohol cannot be, is contained and cannot be taken off-site.
Okay, I don't see anything on their plans that show that. So I imagine that's something that would be picked up during plan check. And then, my other question is in regard to the barriers. There's a, there's a Condition 46 on page 40 that seems to identify some sort of barrier that would be built into this plan, which I also either don't see or don't recognize where it would go. It was just a thought of, is that supposed to be, and I imagine it's not, at the curb? Or is that built into somehow the structure? Maybe there's steel bollards or something built into the structure along there?
Commissioner, I've seen. So that's a standard condition that we've applied to the temporary patios, just to ensure that they're safe. Generally, the temporary patios have been constructed within the parking areas themselves. But with this proposed project, the temporary patio is going to be reconstructed with a permanent patio, with permanent walls around, that'll satisfy that condition. And then again, in this case, we'll have the new walkway that's going around the patio, and so that'll provide the necessary buffer from the parking area.
It's not necessarily K-rail or water, what was the terminology? Water barricades or something?
Correct, yeah.
It seems temporary, so I was wondering about that.
Correct. The proposed plans actually have a nice permanent constructed wall.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Celine.
And thank you for having this slide up. So is, there's a patio now on the other side of the walkway in the existing approved, right? And that's under a temporary permit?
That's correct.
Okay. What, when, does that permit have an expiration date or?
So that permit expired December of last year. However, because the applicant submitted an application to get a permanent patio and has been actively pursuing that, the city permitted them to keep the temporary patio while they're pursuing the application.
So as I look at, if I, if I, if I, if that was shown in pink here, to me, it just looks like we're just kind of flopping patio for walkway. Is that right? Just to kind of keep, put the patio together and put the walkway on the outside, essentially? Or is it making it bigger than what's currently there with the temporary patio?
That's correct. So the current outdoor patio that's allowed to be there permanently is only 498 square feet. They do have a larger temporary patio on the other side of the walkway, so that walkway bisects the patio today. So with the proposal, we're essentially combining the patio and making it permanent, and then providing the walkway around the patio.
Okay. And the square footage of the, the one that's not shown on here, plus the, plus the 498 here, does that about the same as what's, what they're asking for?
They are about the same. For, to give you an idea, the current temporary patio occupies eight parking spaces. But once they do that permanent construction, it will displace 10 parking spaces. So it's slightly larger, but also considering the additional construction that's being done.
And that's just the turn in the walkways, those other two spaces? Yeah, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Langford, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Ms. Bufo, did the applicant identify the location of the two replacement parking spaces? I read it was in the back behind Albertson's, but just curious where they were specifically and what it was replacing.
Sure, so this is a little bit difficult to see, but the two pink highlighted areas you see are behind the pavilions. So that's kind of showing where those parking spaces are going to go. You can see in the blowups that are labeled "Two." There essentially, there's no parking where those spaces are now. They're essentially taking advantage of some open space that's next to the delivery dock for pavilions and near the back man entrance to pavilions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, quick question for you. On the parking management, or excuse me, the review, the sample says, they did a, they did a review on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Is that, did you review that and find that the findings were accurate? Or you're consistent with what you were looking for?
Yeah, I believe so. And then even with that and the question of it being in November, which is a question we get quite a bit with traffic studies, it kind of follows the nature of our traffic phasing ordinance, which has us count outside of peak season or outside of the summer. That's also where we, we had the consultant also looked at and compared it to a May, you know, late spring 2019, pre-COVID counts, which we actually saw a little bit of an increase in the November counts, which we felt were, were adequate.
And, okay, so Thursday, so you felt those were representative days and Sunday's not necessary, just to get a complete picture? You felt that that covers it? You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the weather on that day? Was it, was it sunny or was it raining?
I believe the weather was sunny. I mean, it would be a cooler day, but clear, yes.
Not raining?
We generally don't count rain, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Commissioners, ex parte communications. Commissioner Rosin?
None.
None.
None for me.
None.
Okay, great. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant is here and may want to make a comment or have a presentation.
Good evening Chair. Elmore, Planning, City Staff. Greg Ramirez here. I'm a land use planning consultant for the applicant, which is Boardwalk Investment Groups. We just want to thank the planning staff and the public works staff for their thorough review of our project. We've reviewed the conditions of approval and we are in agreement with all of them. They all make sense. Myself, Gary Jabara from Boardwalk Investment Group, the owner is here, as where, as well as Roger Kadecki, who prepared the very thorough parking studies here, if you should have any questions regarding that. And that basically concludes our comments for now.
Great, thank you. And I heard you accepted, so that's great. Hang on one sec. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant while I have them up there? Commissioners? No, Sina, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing to everybody in the audience. State your name, three minutes. Mr. Mosher.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the parking, I don't live in the area, so I don't have a good feel for how heavily utilized that parking lot is at various times of the year. But I did want to call your attention to Figure 3, which is on handwritten page 17 of the staff report. I think I actually saw it flipped by on one of the slides. And I don't know the date that this Figure 3 was taken on, but I see some vacant spaces on the south side of 32nd Street, paid street parking. The parking lot looks extremely full to me. I don't see a single vacant space in that picture. So I think that would call into question the consultant's conclusion that this lot is never more than 61% full. It certainly looks more like that in this picture. This is what they call Zone 3, that has like 90 spaces. And they observe never more than 56 or something cars. Looks like more here. And then the second comment I wanted to make is about Condition of Approval Number 23, which is on handwritten page 37 of the report. This is about the noise, it's warning the applicant of our city noise restrictions. And it seems to be warning them of Chapter 10-26, and it's followed by a table. I would recommend, unless you're trying to impose on them some restriction more stringent than our ordinance, that you actually delete the second sentence and the table. Number one, the table does not have quite the right numbers in it. The interior nighttime noise standard that we have is 40 dB, not 45. And secondly, the table, if you read the ordinance, is not designating maximum sound, which is what this says. They're actually sound standards. And episodic, short-lived sounds are allowed to be louder than standard. So this would be more stringent than that. But this table with its typos has been in conditional use permits for some time. I think it would be wiser just to cite the ordinance unless you're trying to do something different. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, see none. Before I close, the public hearing, applicant, any comments? Are you guys good? You don't, you don't have yet. Okay, great. Staff, any, any comments for the record?
Sure. As far as the noise standards, they were intended to, or they are intended to match those that are in 10.26, so not to be more stringent or different than is required by the municipal codes. So if there is an error, that, that will be corrected.
Okay.
Just, if I could add on to that, I think just the first sentence would suffice because it does specify that it will be consistent with the noise provisions of 10.26. I think if we just do that modification, just to include the first sentence, and that should cover us.
Okay. Great. And Brad, after seeing that photo, you still feel confident with the?
Yes, thank you. You know, I don't believe we, we ever indicated that the parking lot was never full. Of course, there are going to be circumstances when it is. But seeing a count of about 140 in the off-peak and leaving a capacity or surplus of about 82 spots, yes, I think we're, we're okay with the numbers.
Great, thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to this body for a comment and/or a motion. Commissioners? Commissioner Rosin, Vice Chair.
So I really was concerned about the path of travel here from the beginning, knowing that there will be a gate along what was currently that path of travel. I feel a little bit differently, as long as that gate is in place. Otherwise, people were going to walk right through the middle of it. And that seemed unusual to me. So with the addition of the gate, I can get my head around it. I believe that the image that's in here that shows the parking is the current Google Earth image, and it is, it shows the parking lot mostly full. But, you know, there's a lot of things about this parking lot design with this encroachment that I don't think anyone would do if they were designing it from the beginning. It doesn't feel intentional. It feels something that's like it's forced. But we're going to be able to control the location where the path of travel with the gate. I can get my head around this one.
Any other comments by commissioners? Do we have a motion? Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of language about a gate and that the modification for noise.
Addition of Approval Number 23.
Number 23. Be modified per staff's recommendation.
Great, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on. Item number three, the Shea Residence. Site location, 11 Bay Island. This is item number PA 2024-0017. Moving quick, so I'll give staff one second to get ready. And then when you are, please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, Chair, we have Associate Planner Jenny Tran. I'll be providing an overview of this item.
Great, thanks Jenny.
Thank you Chair Elmore and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran, and I'm the planner for this project for the Shea Residence at 11 Bay Island. This project is for a coastal development permit to demolish an existing single-unit dwelling and to construct a new single-unit dwelling. As part of the request, it includes a parking management plan and a request to increase the height up to 33 feet. This is the property here at Bay Island, which sits in Newport Harbor. The subject property is 11 Bay Island, which is the building site to the north of the island as shown here. So Bay Island is one legal lot. The island itself is a single legal lot, and the only true property line is shown in yellow around the island. The island is a stock cooperative with individual building sites, as shown with the orange lines here, which was established in the use permit that has development standards for each individual building site. Additionally, access to the island is through a pedestrian bridge, as shown in the blue line here, where vehicles are not allowed through the pedestrian bridge. Only pedestrians and golf carts are permitted, permitted to cross this bridge. The property and development must comply with Title 20, which is our typical planning and zoning code, as well as Title 21, which is the local coastal program implementation plan. Title 20's development standards are set forth in the approved use permit number 36184 Bay Island, which looks at each individual building site. So for 11 Bay Island, the project does comply with the setback set for this building site. Additionally, it does meet the maximum available floor area for the building site, which is 6,188 square feet. And the applicant is proposing 4,917 square feet for the new dwelling. The use permit requires a parking of two off-site parking spaces in an off-site parking structure, and those two spaces are provided, as well as one additional space on-site for the golf cart. The use permit allows a maximum height of 24 feet for a flat roof and 29 feet for a slope roof. But also in the use permit, it does allow the increase to 28 feet for a flat roof and 33 feet for a slope roof, with approval from Planning Commission. So this is the elevation that shows the proposed height, where the maximum flat roof and maximum slope roof elevations are. And the proposed project is being built just under the 33 feet maximum for a slope roof. So for Title 21 Development Standards, it must comply with the local coastal program implementation plan. This looks at the island as one single property versus the individual building site itself. So the project does meet the required setback of the island. And additionally, it does meet the maximum available floor area. Since it does look at the island as a whole, the proposed square footage is the assumed square footage of each individual cumulative building site, if it were to be built to its maximum, which is still at maximum under what's allowed for the entire island itself. The parking required is three parking spaces on-site, but as previously stated, vehicles are not allowed on-site of the island. So the parking is met with the two off-site parking spaces and one on-site for the golf cart storage. This is consistent with Title 21 that allows for the adjustments to the off-site, off-street parking requirements with approval of a coastal development permit. The height allowed in Title 21 is 28 feet for a flat roof and 33 feet for a slope roof. So it does comply with the height requirements of Title 21, and no deviations to the height are requested when it comes to Title 21. For the parking management plan, as previously stated, the use permit requires two spaces in an off-site structure, whereas the implementation plan requires three spaces off, on-site. So the parking management plan is meeting this requirement by providing the two spaces in an off-site structure with assigned parking and the one golf cart space on-site. And the image to the right is that parking structure for Bay Island, where the cars are parked. So this map shows the location of that off-site parking structure at 501 West Bay Avenue, where each dwelling is assigned two parking spaces. Residents would park their vehicles in the structure and drive the golf carts up the yellow line along Island Avenue and across the pedestrian bridge, where they would park their golf cart on the island. We did receive a couple of other comments for this project. One is in question if this is a historical, or if there's historical or architectural significance to this project. So Bay Island, including this individual building site, is not designated as historical resource under both the National or the California Register. There's also a question about the finished floor elevation, which was a mistake in the resolution, which will be redlined. The finished floor is 10.0 feet, which meets our minimum requirement of nine feet and a VD 88. Additionally, there's a question if the, since the use permit is not certified by the LCP, if the project should be designed to the most restrictive standards of the LCP. The project is designed to comply with both the use permit and the LCP, whereas, especially when it comes to the parking and building height, the proposed height is allowed for the LCP, so no deviations to the height are requested for the Title 21 LCP. And additionally, the LCP allows for an off-site parking adjustment with CDP approval. We also received comments regarding the size of the development being too large for Bay Island, but as shown on the previous tables for Title 20 and 21, it does comply with the development standards, especially for the building site, which allows about 6,000 square feet. The proposed structure is proposed to be just under 5,000 square feet. And the Condition of Approval Number 17 is related to the noise standard with the noise table per code. This is a condition that's typically only included in commercial projects, so staff is recommending to just strike that condition from the conditions of approval. And finally, we received a comment from a member of the Bay Island Board of Directors, who is supportive of the project, and also restated that the Architectural Committee of Bay Island has reviewed and approved the design. There are a couple red lines staff is recommending through the resolution. The first one is an additional statement to be added to the SEQA findings, since we are using a Class 3 exemption. are using a Class III exemption, which states that the project can't be a historical resource. So this further states that the property is not a historical resource under the National and California Register. The second red line is to correct that finished floor elevation to 10 feet versus nine feet, and the third red line is to strike condition of approval number 17, which is related to the noise standard. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find this project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class III, and to adopt this resolution approving this coastal development permit as amended by staff. Thank you, Commissioners. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is also available for questions.
Great, thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, questions of staff? Commissioner Rosin, I'll start down with you.
Is Bay Island considered a high-density area? And I'm asking this because of construction and when construction would be allowed. So like Corona del Mar, where you're not allowed to work on weekends? Seems like this might be inappropriate. I just thought about it.
We'll look into that.
I don't know the exact dates, but there is a restriction on construction around summertime is when no construction is allowed, and they cannot resume construction until Labor Day.
Great, thank you. I don't think we have any other questions of staff. Commissioners, Ex parte communications, I'll start with, again, with Commissioner Rosin.
None.
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 Great. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I believe the applicant is here, if they wish to say any words. Nope, good to go. Okay, great. I'll open up the public hearing to members of the audience. Any of the members of the audience wish to make a public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Applicant, I do have one question for you. Can you come up real quick? There are conditions of approval stated in the, in here. Are you in agreement with the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Thank you. You're good to go. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to this body for a comment or discussion or a motion.
Chair, just, I'm sorry, just to answer Commissioner Rosin's question, it is considered a high-density area and subject to the no construction on Saturdays, Sundays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, okay. At this point, again, comment, motion? Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair Rosin?
This is a great-looking building. It's going to look beautiful here in this location. I will make a recommendation or a motion to approve.
Great, and I agree with that. I think it's a great-looking building, and I will second that as the chair. Let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Okay, moving on. Next, staff and commissioners, item number four, motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item number five, report by the Community Development Director or request for matters which a Planning Commissioner member would like to be placed on a future agenda item.
No, Chair. High Mill Morio, Deputy Director. I just wanted to note that the City Council at their last meeting did vote to approve and move forward the Housing Element Implementation Program amendments. They also directed staff to process an amendment to the housing element to remove the requirements from, for a vote from the rezoning program, and so we are in process and working with HCD.
Great. Any members in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Item number six, requests for excused absences. Any requests for excused absences? You guys are stewards of this community. At this time, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.